Good morning, everyone. We ask now that you would just please rise and join me in the invocation to be given by Pastor Chris Anderson with Retro Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Anderson.
Let's pray. God, we come before you constantly in awe of all that you are and all that you do, Lord. Most of all, we come before you and we thank you for your son, Jesus, and what he did on that cross for us. What I pray right now, if there's anyone in this room, Lord, that doesn't know you, Lord, that you will move on their hearts in an incredible way, that you will reveal yourself to them in an undeniable way, and that you would allow great things, Lord, to come through that relationship. God, we come before you and we have leaders sitting before us and among us, Lord, and we know that to be a true leader, we have to be a true follower, God, that if you would just lead through us, that we would make headway in the right direction. God, I pray that you would give a sensitive ear to your leading, to all of these leaders, Lord, or that you would continue to pave the way and provide the way, Lord, to move this city forward, that you would provide wisdom, God, we thank you that your word promises us that if we ask for wisdom, that you give it to us in abundance, Lord. What I pray that you would just have protection over these folks and their families, Lord. I pray that you'll watch over them and that they would draw closer to you, God, so that they can lead in a way that is an example for all others to follow, God. What I pray that you would continue to open doors that need to be opened, that you would shut doors that need to be shut, and, God, that you would just provide the insight into the next steps that need to grow this community, to grow this family, Lord, of a city that we have. God, I pray your protection all around us, but, Lord, I pray for a city to be hungry and sought after of you, Lord, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and thank you, Pastor Anderson. This meeting of the Board of Commissioners is now called to order, and we would like to make an announcement that all planning and zoning items that were advertised for this meeting have been postponed by staff until further notice, and, of course, they will be posted on the planning and zoning page. So if you have questions, please feel free to call. We're now moving to the acceptance of our agenda. There are a couple of items that needs to be amended for the agenda. We're going to remove item 12A, which is the renaming of the Henry County Airport, and then we're going to add two items to the consent agenda, and these are going to be the senior services application for community services block grant contract for fiscal year 2018, and also for the SPOS resolution approving the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation, estimated cost for Hemp Hill Road at State Route 138. I'm now going to open the floor for a motion to accept the amended agenda.
Remove.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussions or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We now move to the proclamation for the National Crime Victims' Rights Week, and we're going to ask Ms. Melissa Robinson to come forth with the proclamation.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. This morning, we have a proclamation in recognition of National Crime Victims' Rights Week from April 2nd to 8th, 2017. Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year affecting both individuals and communities, and whereas providing victims with knowledge of their rights and available services further strengthens their ability to recover by restoring a sense of self-empowerment, and a trauma-informed response to victims promotes healing and fosters strength in survivors. And whereas victims who feel understood and supported are more likely to disclose their victimization, seek services, and participate in the justice process. And whereas this year's theme, "Strength, Resilience, Justice", reflects a vision in which all victims are strengthened by the response they receive, organizations are resilient in response to challenges, and communities are able to seek collective justice and healing. And whereas a collaborative response among victim service professionals, criminal justice officials, legal professionals, medical and mental health providers, and community leaders is essential to reach and serve all victims, especially those who are marginalized, have disabilities, or live in remote locations. And whereas strengthening the response by bringing diverse skills, perspectives, and understandings together in the service of victims also serves to build the resilience of those responders by strengthening the confidence in their roles, abilities, and sense of contributions. And whereas Henry County is dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in their aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that April 2nd through 8th, 2017 shall be known as National Crime Victims' Rights Week in Henry County, and they reaffirm this county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during this week and throughout the year, and expresses their gratitude and appreciation for those who provide services to victims of crime so that they may find assistance, support, justice, and peace. Signed by Chair June Wood, attested by County Clerk Stephanie Broad.
All right, thank you, Ms. Robinson. Okay, well, our general solicitor is here for a picture. Okay, and as they are coming, we do want to make a note that there will be a Crime Victims Memorial hosted by our District Attorney and also the general solicitor on March 30th at Shallow Baptist Church at 6:30 PM. Very good, all right, thank you. Thank you again. We'll now move into item seven, which is the District Five Appointment to the Henry County Development Authority, and we have a resolution appointing Pierre Clemmons as District Five Appointee to the Development Authority. I now open the floor for a motion for approval.
Remove.
We got a motion?
Second.
We got a second? Any questions, comments, or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? We now move into our consent agenda, and we have several items to be listed, so please bear with us. We did not have our meeting, our second meeting in February. But our consent agenda will include several items, and, of course, the one that we'll begin with is with the Henry County Fire Department. These resolutions will be accepting a donation in the amount of $5,801.10 from the Georgia Firefighters Byrne Foundation. We also have a resolution approving an asset disposition services to the agreement between thepropertyroom.com and Henry County, and that again is with our Henry County Fire Police Department. And then again, another resolution declaring a 1998 Dodge Stratus as surplus property and authorization to auction said vehicle online with govdeals.com for the Henry County Police Department. For E911, we're approving a resolution or suggesting a resolution to the acceptance of funds from the City of McDonough for E911 Radio System Project and Associated Budget Amendment. For the county clerk, we're suggesting a resolution adopting Georgia Archives retention schedule for local governments. For facilities maintenance, we're authorizing the transfer of contingency funds to facilities maintenance funds to purchase a North Star 200-gallon hot water pressure washer. For transit, there's an approval for the Georgia Department of Human Services Coordinated Transportation Grant Amendment Number Two for FY 2017. Then there's another transit resolution authorizing submittal of application for the Federal Transit Administration 5310 Transportation Grant for elderly and disabled individuals through Department of Human Services for FY 2018. For the court system, there are resolutions approval to submit applications to the Office of the Governor/Criminal Justice of Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2018 for the DUI Drug Court, for the Adult Felony Drug Court, for the Resource Court, and also for the Juvenile Court. The county attorney is suggesting a resolution authorizing execution and acquisition of right-of-way and driveway easement for improvements on State Route 155 Hampton Locust Grove Road/Beale Gardner Parkway. From Stormwater, there is a request for authorization, execution and delivery of sewer line easement and right of entry for sewer line improvements on Industrial Boulevard. And then SPOS has several items as well. Approving the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation, estimated cost for campground road extension. Also for the reimbursement agreement with Snapping Shoals EMC for Elliott Road. For payment agreement with Central Georgia EMC for utility relocation, estimated cost for Frog Road. And the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation, estimated cost for Frog Road. And the payment agreement with Central Georgia EMC for utility relocations, estimated cost for Lester Mill Road. And then the agreement between Henry County and Norfolk Railway Company for Old State Route Three over Norfolk Southern Railroad. And then the installation and maintenance and energy for the lighting of Hemp Hill Road at State Route 138. And the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation, estimated cost for Anvil Block Road. And then the final SPOS, and also item, is the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation, estimated cost for Hemp Hill Road at 138. And then the final agenda item, consent agenda item, is a resolution authorizing submittal of application for the Community Services Block Grant for fiscal year 2018. And now we'll just ask the Commissioners, is there any items that you have, wish to have removed from the consent agenda? And if so, please announce it. If not, I'm calling for a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Chair, I still move.
Got a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? This ends the consent agenda. We're now move to item nine on our agenda for public safety, and we're going to ask Major Gowing to come forth to present two items from the Henry County Police Department.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
The first item before you is a resolution to purchase one Dodge Charger and related emergency equipment and the approved, and approval of the associated budget amendment to complete the purchases. Back in December of this year, during the ICE event that you recall we had, one of our police vehicles was parked on the side of the road helping someone. Incidentally, another vehicle slid into it and totaled the vehicle. Everyone was okay, but we're seeking to replace this vehicle. Because of the timely manner in which it takes us to be able to order a vehicle, get the equipment, get it here, and get it equipped, we're anticipating the funds coming from the insurance company to replace the vehicle. In doing so, we're requesting to go ahead and purchase out of our salary savings account in anticipation of those funds arriving, and I'll go through those items at this time. The department is in need of replacing the vehicle immediately and is requesting the salary savings funds to be, to go forward with the fulfillment. Police Department is recommending the purchase of one 2017 Dodge Charger from Akins Ford. This is under a state contract. Further recommendations are to purchase emergency equipment from Georgia Department of Public Safety Excess Property Program based on pricing that's provided within. This is GSA contract. In addition, we would like to purchase a mobile camera system from CompuTech International based on pricing from also a GSA contract. Purchase the graphics from SignCraft in the amount of $235, and that is the lowest bid. Purchase a mobile radio from Loudon Communications, which is also a Georgia state contract. Finally, we would like to purchase a laptop computer from CDWG to go into the vehicle. This is also on a state contract. All quotes of the above equipment were solicited through the purchasing department. We're requesting to consider the additional budget amendment to salary savings transferring a total amount of $42,226 from the Uniform Patrol Regular Employees to the Police Department line items as follows. $23,372 to capital outlays. $18,619 to small equipment. $235 to general supplies account. Funds are available and will be placed in the proper accounts pending your approval.
Great, thank you, Major Gowing. Now call for a motion. And I will get to, if I can get to the motion in a second, then we'll have discussion. I have a call for a motion. Have we got a motion?
Second.
Second, now open for discussion.
Major Gowing, a couple of questions here.
Yes, sir.
This was a Charger?
Yes, sir.
Were we not able to salvage the equipment?
Some of the equipment will be able to be salvaged. Some of it has to go back and be recertified. Pending all those things, doing what we're doing is replacing all of it in advance. If later on, we go to purchase another vehicle, we will reuse whatever we can, but I can't tell you what's reusable and what's not at this point.
How about the laptop?
The laptop computer will be reused.
Okay, because you got in here to purchase one.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Now we'll ask for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Major Gowing.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll move on to the next item.
A resolution before you requesting the award of a bid of the annual contract for the police uniforms through Galls LLC. The contract for police uniforms has expired, and the police department is requesting the annual contract through the purchasing department. The contract term will be for one year from the date of execution and may be renewed for two additional years. Seal bid number 1739 was solicited through the purchasing department to provide uniforms for the police department on an annual renewable contract basis. The bid was posted on the Henry County website and the listed websites of the ACCG, GLGA, and Team Georgia Marketplace. Two bids were received, and a bid tab is attached. The lowest bid was received from Galls LLC of Lexington, Kentucky. Funds for the police department's uniforms have been budgeted for.
We've heard the request for a resolution. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Any questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, Major Gowing.
Thank you all.
All right, we'll now call up Mr. Tim Coley for our Parks and Recreation Resolutions this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first resolution we have this morning is for a F-250 pickup truck, and it's necessary for us to transport trailers and mowing equipment from park to park as we maintain the parks. With the addition of the new parks we've had over the last two years, this is necessary for us to be able to move a new crew that was hired on last year to be able to transport the staff and the equipment to maintain the parks. It was, went through a state contract. The price of the F-250 truck is $26,027, and that's our resolution for the truck.
Okay. We've heard the presentation of the resolution, a call for a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments for Mr. Coley? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, Mr. Coley may move to the next item.
The next resolution is authorizing the purchase of a Bush Hog for the Parks Department. We have a trailer and a tractor that will move this Bush Hog, but all we have right now is a finishing mower. And with the addition of a couple of new parks, Bush Hog is necessary for us to be able to maintain these parks. The new Bud Kelly Park, Nash Farm, the additional areas at JP Moser that we're bush hogging. So this equipment is necessary for us to do the maintenance for these larger parks in a timely manner. As we're asking for a resolution, this is on state contract, and the price is $15,006.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. I have, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Any discussions? Yes, go ahead.
So, Mr. Coley, how soon will you be able to get this? I know that we're going into the season where grass is going to be growing pretty rapidly, and I know that's one of the issues that we're having with keeping the grass down.
They said four to six weeks from the time we get this signed.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Coley.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, we'll now invite up Mr. Wade Stroud to present to us on Stormwater.
Good morning, Chair and Board Members.
Good morning.
This morning, I have before you a resolution to purchase one Hyundai HX300L excavator for the Henry County Stormwater Management Department. Last year, as we began to do our budget preparation, one of the things that we identified that we would need to do at Henry County Stormwater Management is we have shared duties inside the right-of-way with Henry County DOT is purchase an excavator that could handle doing those types of pipe replacements. We went out and put a bid out under a set of specifications. We did not specify a specific unit. That way, we had a better competitive process. We had nine bids. This bid was conducted through our purchasing department and posted on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, ACCG, and GLGA, and again, as I said, nine vendors responded to this invitation to bid, as you can see from the attached bid tab. We recommend awarding the bid to a mine construction company incorporated of Coming, Georgia, as they were the overall lowest and most responsive bidder for this piece of equipment. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Okay, we've heard the resolution request. Open the floor now for a motion. We got a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Any comments, questions, or discussion? Yes.
Wait, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I don't see a trailer on here. Do you guys have a trailer that'll fit this?
This past year, Commissioner Prince, we were able to purchase a trailer that will accommodate this piece of equipment.
Okay, all right.
Very good, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Stroud.
Thank you.
We're now moving to item 12 regarding the airport, and of course, item A was removed regarding the name change, and we'll now ask Mr. Tony to come up to speak to us on the resolution authorizing use of airport for filming purposes.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have before you a resolution authorizing the use of the airport by the filming, or the airport property by the filming industry. Obviously, the airport receives inquiries from companies within the filming industry to film and conduct filming activities on the airport property. The airport being a great asset to the community, we would like to promote opportunities within the filming industry at the Henry County Airport. We established some daily fees for those activities that you see before you. We have a setup and a breakdown day rate and a filming and shooting day rate. And the also, there's also a permit application that the applicant would be, have to apply for within the Planning and Zoning Department. And once approved, we would like the, our license agreement with the county would also be part of the process, and we would like for you guys to approve the ability to be able to have these filming rates set forth and have the chair and/or the county manager to authorize those agreements to be in place with the filming industry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tony. The floor is now open for a motion for approval.
I still move, Chair.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? We're open now for any comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. So we'll now welcome up Mr. Burke Halter regarding these several SPOS items that we have today.
Chair, Commissioners, good morning. The voters of Henry County approved the SPOS Four referendum, which included funds for a senior recreation center in District Two. Construction of the senior recreation center is nearing completion. District Two Commissioner Dee Clemmons has requested to name the new facility, quote, "Bear Creek Senior Center and Recreation Center". If anyone has any questions?
All right. The floor is now open for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Any discussions?
I just want to make sure that we understand why we came up with the name Bear Creek. Hampton already has a huge festival every year that they call the Bear Creek Festival. I don't know if you guys have not participated in that festival. It's a wonderful festival that the city of Hampton does every year. But the Bear Creek name comes from the original settlers of Henry County. The original settlers of Henry County were the Indian, the Creek Indians, and the Bear Creek runs through the city of Hampton. So in correlation with the festival and the original settlers of Henry County, which is the Creek Indians, we chose the name Bear Creek Recreation Center. So just wanted to put a little history out there.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we've had a first and a second, and a comment. Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, let me proceed.
Thank you. The voters of Henry County approved the SPOS Four referendum, which included funds for a District Five new park. The construction of the District Five new park was approved and is near completion. District Five Commissioner Bruce Holm has requested to name the park, quote, "Village Park at North Henry", end quote. If anyone has any questions?
And I also want to announce that the ribbon cutting for this park will be next Thursday, the 16th of March. And on that day, we will be honoring two families, the Bellamy family and the Bowden family, by reading proclamations and dedicating each of the football fields to those family names who have done so much for the Fairview community. So I want to say thank you for all your hard work, and thank the Board of Commissioners for their support in this effort.
Okay, we've heard the resolution. The floor is now open for a motion for approval.
So move.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
Second, any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay.
The construction of the District Five new park was approved on December 15th, 2015. Game Time Domenica Recreation Products, Inc., has provided a quote "to furnish and install all listed playground equipment which is attached to the resolution" and park course equipment at the District Five new park in the amount of $165,335.47, of which the quote is attached. The SPOS Department is requesting authorization to use the SPOS Four funds to purchase and install said playground and the park course equipment at the new park using U.S. Communities Contract Number 110179. Funds are available in the SPOS Four District Five Park account. Anyone has any questions?
I have questions regarding the playground set. Is this going to be a larger set, or is this going to be a tap-down type of playground?
Commissioner, it's going to be the initial size that we had planned when we initially budgeted for the project. we initially budgeted for the project.
Okay, well, you've heard the resolution. Uh, the floor is now open for a motion for approval.
So move.
We got a motion?
Second.
Um, any comments, questions, or further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, well, we have Mr. Rocky Romero that is now coming for some additional SPOSS items. Oh, and our Assistant County Manager Sherri Matthews has joined in as well.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. Um, before Rocky presents his item, um, internally, staff has really tried to do a more detailed job of presenting SPOSS items in which we have to bring forth to you all budget amendments. And so going forward, what you will see is a presentation not only by staff, but from the County Manager's Office as well, so that you all understand why we're doing the budget amendment, and so for those that are here in the audience, they understand as well. So before Rocky begins, I just kinda wanna give an overview of this project and why we are where we are, and then Rocky will proceed with the actual resolution. Um, the first item is the Campground Road Extension Project, and there are actually two items, but I'll go ahead and give the history of the Campground Road Project. Um, as you all may or may not know, this project was actually designated as a SPOSS Two project in two thousand and two. Um, as a result of it being designated as a SPOSS Two project, um, in two thousand and two, funding was allocated for the design only of the project. Um, the design work started in November of two thousand and three, and that was all that was completed with the project. Um, staff then moved on and the board elected to designate this project as a SPOSS Three project in two thousand and seven. The original budget for the project was five-point-three million dollars. Um, as you all may or may not know, in two, during the SPOSS Three program, the collection rates were not where they needed to be, and so every commissioner elected to reduce their SPOSS allocations by approximately a hundred-and-eighty million dollars. At that time, the sitting commissioner, um, elected to reduce the funding for this project. Moving forward, there's been several budget amendments pertaining to this project, which has resulted in several reductions to the project, again, based on collections and then based on just the needs for what needed to be accomplished with the project. Um, as you all are aware, in two thousand and nine, there was a Title VI claim that was filed with the Georgia Department of Transportation, and as a result, when a Title VI claim is filed, we cannot proceed, um, until we get clearance from GDOT that we are able to proceed. That took from two thousand and nine to twenty twelve. As you all are aware, we, um, continued on with the project after twenty twelve, but we had to work in coordination with the Georgia Department of Transportation on the bridge project. So the right-of-way near Meadow Brook started in twenty twelve, which meant that we could not move on with this project until the right-of-way had been completed as part of the bridge project for GDOT. Um, again, we reset the project, and the project sat on the books for another four or five years, and we had to begin the process of acquiring all of the parcels. Now, this project consisted of seventy parcels that we had to either acquire, condemn, or, or obtain through the county. And so we had to go through that process, which took a lengthy amount of time. As a result, we were finally able to bid this project out in twenty sixteen, which is why we're here now. So as you all can see, there's been a lot of history with this project. And as a result, the project cost has increased because if the project was originally in two thousand and two and now we're in twenty seventeen, costs have gone up. So I just wanted to share that history with you all so that you would understand why we're doing this budget amendment. There has not been a change in the scope of work. There has not been any amendments or change orders with this. This is simply a cost increase that we're going to have to either approve or deny. So I'll give Rocky an opportunity to go over the resolutions, but just wanted you all to have that information at first.
All right, thank you, Ms. Matthews. Any questions before we go on?
We really have to go through the entire history of all these, um, these projects before we approve them, and we're gonna move forward with approving these projects anyway because they're on the SPOSS list. So I mean, is there, is it really necessary for us to, to give a detailed history of, you know, all the way back to two thousand and five on what we're doing today?
Wait, okay, go ahead.
Staff, because this project's been on the books for so long and because we're moving so much money to actually give the history, I, I just wanna be a little more transparent to the, to the public, 'cause we are moving quite a bit of money right now. So I, I just, I just wanted the public to be aware of this one.
Any other questions for Ms. Matthews before Mr. Romero moves? Okay.
Good evening, I mean, good morning, Chair and Board members.
Good morning.
And, uh, like Sherri mentioned, I'm gonna go through some resolutions here, and this project is been in the book for a long time, and, and hopefully, we can move forward and start construction here in the spring. Uh, the first, first resolution is in regard with a campground road extension, as it was designated as SPOSS Three Major Transportation Improvement Project. Uh, the campground road extension originally solely, was located solely in District Three, but it's now located in District Three and District Four after the district's lines were redrawn back in twenty ten, se, because of the census. Additional funds in the amount of two-million-eight-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-three-hundred, six-hundred-seventy-three dollars are needed for utility and construction. The budget amendment is needed for this cost, and the following are the projects where the fundings are available. One-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-five-hundred-forty-one from District Three resurfacing fiscal year twenty thirteen, which those projects were completed back then. Eight-hundred-eighty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-nineteen dollars from District Four Eagles Landing Parkway, which is completed as well. Sixty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-fifty-four dollars from District Four Arrow Embarrassment, which is part of the Eagles Landing Parkway. Sixty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-eighty-five dollars from District Four East Lake Road Extension Phase Two, which is completed as well. Nine-hundred-sixty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-nine dollars from District Four Rock Quarry Road Widening. This project is in SPOSS Four and is on the design, currently under design. Five-hundred-seventy-thousand-seven, uh, seven dollars from District Four Hemp Hill at one-thirty-eight. This project is currently under construction, and we're using SPOSS Four funds for this project. And the last one is two-hundred-twenty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-eighty-eight dollars from District Four Resurfacing for the fiscal year twenty thirteen. Those projects were completed at that time as well.
Let's circle back around to, um, the Rock Quarry Road Widening. This is actually, the nine-hundred-sixty-eight is actually for the bridge that's already completed, is that correct?
Correct. Uh, one of the things on SPOSS Three, just to give you a little history, we had, we actually had three projects under SPOSS Three for the Rock Quarry corridor. One was the widening, the other one was the improvements of, uh, banks at Rock Quarry and the bridge itself. So at the time, all those projects were combined basically into one account. Therefore, when we had the savings from Eagles Landing, originally, a lot of the funds were moved into the Rock Quarry widening, but all that money, a lot of the money was used for the actual bridge, which as you know, it cost over seven million dollars, just, just the bridge. And one of the things we did, we did the bridge as a four-lane. So when we do the final, uh, construction of the widening, we're not gonna have to do anything with the, with the bridge itself, other than going inside and building the concrete median, which right now, there's a temporary barrier wall.
And what was the scope of SPOSS Four in the Rock Quarry Road Widening Project?
It's just design only, on design only, and that's, that's where we currently are right now.
And we, we paid for that?
Yes, sir, we actually received ARC, um, ARC funds as well on this project for the design, one-point-two-million dollars, and three-hundred-thousand for, from SPOSS is, is the match for the design. And what we're gonna do, once we're into the design, as ARC, they put projects every year, when we get a little bit closer into the right-of-way phase, we're gonna submit an application to request those funds as well as for, for right-of-way. So hopefully, by the time those funds comes available, the future program should, should be in place, so we should be able to have a match for that, for the right-of-way as well.
What's the projected cost, just out of curiosity, for the, for, for?
For which project?
Rock Quarry.
Rock Quarry, for the right-of-way? It's probably around seven to eight million dollars for the right-of-way.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Rocky.
Commissioner, to echo Rocky's comments, what we try to do with a lot of our SPOSS projects is go ahead and put the funding in for the design, so that when the Atlanta Regional Commission or the Georgia Department of Transportation has a call for projects, we're able to say that we have some funding in that project. So a lot of projects, we will just put in funding for design so that we'll have at least an up, um, for some jurisdictions that may not have funds already allocated for a project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll now, um, open the floor for a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
We got a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions, comments, or further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, you may proceed.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners, the next resolution, uh, is regarding, again, regarding campground as well. Under SPOSS Four Resurfacing Widening and Surface Streaming is an approved District Four SPOSS Four project. A budget amendment in the amount of three-million-seven-hundred-fifty-one-thousand-one-hundred-forty-two dollars is needed to ma, to make funds available for District Four Resurfacing Widening or Surface Streaming Projects. The funds will be used to widen Jodico Road as part of the campground road extension project. Staff recommends using the following District Four funds as described below. Four-hundred-thousand from Hemp Hill at one-thirty-eight, as I mentioned before, this project's under construction. Uh, fifty-thousand from Mosley at Stairway one-thirty-eight, that project was completed by GDOT. And eight-hundred-three, eight-hundred-and-three-thousand-eight-hundred-two dollars from Banks at Rock Quarry. Again, that intersection has been completed. And also, staff recommends using the following District Four funds from projects that will have to be placed on hold pending further funding. Three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand from Night Drive, four-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars from Mosley Park, and one-million-six-hundred-ninety-thousand-one-hundred-one dollars from Selfridge Bridge Road. I'll take any questions?
Any questions? Yes.
Um, just wanna make a statement to my constituents here. I, I realize that we're pulling this money from Night Drive, Mosley Park, and Self, uh, Selfridge Bridge, but at this point, we, we've got to move on with this campground road extension, and it's been on the books for fifteen years now, so we've got to move on so that this, we just had to pull money where we had to pull money from.
One note to that, Commissioner, we are working on the design of Selfridge Bridge, and we do have the funds, we do have some funds there for that.
Okay.
So we'll continue working on the design as well, on, on the bridge.
Okay, all right, excellent.
Any other questions? All right, floor is now open for a motion for approval.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any further comments, questions? All in favor? Any opposed? You may proceed, Mr. Romero.
Yes, Chair, um, the last resolution is actually, uh, the ward, um, and as mentioned before, uh, campground road extension is a designated District Three and District Four SPOSS Two and SPOSS Three Major Transportation Improvement Projects, as well as now with the approval of the previous resolution is that this, we're using District Four Resurfacing Widening Projects, uh, funds for it. The widening of Jodico Road from Meadow Brook Drive to Peach Drive is, like I mentioned, part of the campground road extension project. Seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department for the construction of this project, bid number seventeen-twenty-six. We received six seal bids, we received and, and we, they were reviewed. The lowest bid was, uh, McCord Grading in the amount of thirteen-million-three-hundred-twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. The funds are now available in SPOSS Two, SPOSS Three, and the SPOSS Four accounts, as mentioned previously. Staff recommends award of the, of the lowest bidder, which is McCord Grading, uh, for the amount stated, and also, there's a note here regard, uh, for this resolution that it also authorized the County Manager or his designated to approve changes less than fifty thousand if needed.
Okay, we've heard the resolution. Any questions?
All right.
Go ahead.
I just have a statement. Um, this project has been a pure test of determination. For fifteen years, we've been struggling through this thing, between the Title VI, the railroad, which was very, very difficult to deal with. Um, but I do wanna thank a couple of people. I, I need to thank Commissioner Reed Bowman, who set this project up and got it in a position to where I could finish it up, and I need to thank you, Rocky, um, and your staff for getting everything together. Um, it's been a trial, to say the least, and I need to take, thank County Attorney for all his work, 'cause we've had quite a bit of attorney work that we've been doing with, um, condemning property and trying to get this property done. But, uh, a couple of notes on here that I wanna make the public aware of. I opted to do a four-lane bridge going over Norfolk Southern. Um, I could do a two-lane bridge for seven million dollars, or I had the option to do a two, four-lane bridge for nine million. Um, I went with the four-lane bridge. At some point in the near future, just like Rock Quarry, we will be four-laning, um, this entire road going through there, and if we wait ten years or so, when we do the, the four-laning, you could be talking nine million dollars to ten million dollars to put in another two-lane bridge, not to mention permitting through, uh, Norfolk Southern.
Yes.
Is it years.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, years.
It is.
So, um, and I didn't think there for a while this was gonna happen, because when the bridge, when we're designing the bridge, there's power lines above and railroad tracks below, and we had to hit this real sweet spot right in the center because we couldn't get too high, and initially, the bridge was actually designed too high. So again, I wanna thank everybody that's helped with this project, thank my other Commissioners for helping me fund this, and, uh, staff and Sherri, you've done a great job getting this all together, so I've left anybody out, I'm, I'm sorry for that. But with that, I will gladly say I move to approve.
All right, we've got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. Any comments, further comments, questions?
I just wanna thank you, Commissioner Prince, because we're, uh, over two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand people in this county, and we still got a lot of two-way, two-road lanes. And Henry County, we have to expand and widen roads. We are gonna have to go to more than two road lanes in this county. We're complaining of the traffic, and this is just one way to solve our traffic solution, so I wanna thank you for standing up. People don't understand what we have to do, but this is a good move.
All right, very good. We've got a motion, a second, and any further comments? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay? You may move on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got. We got, we got another resolution.
Yes, he's moving on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, next, next resolution is, Ambo Block is, uh, is an approved District Five SPOSS Four Major Transportation Project. A budget amendment in the amount of one-million-six-hundred-forty-one-thousand is needed for utility relocation and construction. Staff recommends using the one-point-six-million, one-million-six-hundred-forty-one-thousand from the East Atlanta Thurman and Flat Rock Project. Seal, seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department for the construction of Ambo Bl, Ambo Block Road, bid number seventeen-dash-thirty-seven. We also received six seal bids, uh, and they were reviewed. The lowest bid was from CMS in the amount of four-million-three-hundred-sixty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty dollars. Staff recommends approval of the budget amendment in the amount stated and the award of the project to CMS, uh, also as, as the amount stated. In addition, the resolution also authorized the County Manager or his designated to approve changes less than fifty thousand if needed.
And again, this is a SPOSS Three project that we are just trying to see to completion. Um, again, this is a budget amendment, um, for a project that is on the books, and we're ready to start construction.
Very good. Any questions? The floor is now open for a motion for approval. Got a motion? We have a second. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. We got one more item.
My last, my last, hopefully, my last resolution.
Yeah?
Uh, it's, uh, this resolution is regarding, uh, budget amendment for District Two Bridge and Culver Repairs for Hampton over Indian Creek. SPOSS, the board approved resolution number sixteen-dash-two-thirty-eight on August sixteenth, twenty sixteen, for the construction of bridges and culver repairs, and that included all five districts. Uh, there were about thirteen projects, uh, on, on this list. District Two Hampton over Indian Creek had overruns due to excess of amounts sealed and cracks inside the box culvert. Uh, the estimated quantity was around two-hundred-and-eighty cubic yards, but the actual amount removed was around four-hundred-and-twenty-four cubic yards of, uh, sealed inside the box culvert. Uh, and this culvert is a pretty good size, it's, uh, it's a four-barrel, twelve-by-ten on the size. Uh, also, the estimated quantity on epoxy pressure injection for concrete cracks was estimated around eleven feet, but the actual amount of the repair ended up being about twenty-three linear feet. An additional one-hundred-and-two-thousand-fifty-six dollars is needed to cover the overruns on the Hampton over Indian Creek. The funds are available in District Two Hampton over- The funds are available in District Two Hampton over Towalaga River. Staff recommends not painting the Hampton over Towalaga River Bridge to cover the overruns for the Hampton over Indian Creek. Not painting the bridge will not compromise the integrity of the bridge. The structural capacity of the bridge will not be affected if we don't paint it at this time. Budget amendment is needed to cover the overruns, and as I stated, we would like to get the funds from the Towalaga River Project.
All right, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions? All right, the floor's now open for a motion for approval.
I saw move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any other comments or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, Commissioner Maron. All right, we'll move now into item fourteen from finance, and we have Ms. Angie Sora, who's going to be presenting instead of Mr. Alada today.
Good morning, Chair, Board of Commissioners.
Good morning.
A little under the weather this morning, so excuse my voice. Before you have a resolution to amend fiscal year sixteen seventeen's budget for the unfunded pension actuarial liability payment, the sixteen seventeen budget will be needed to be amended in the amount of, excuse me, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. This will give us the difference between what we budgeted and what the actuarial cost came in at, and the funds will come out of fund balance.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions? Okay, the floor's now open for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Sora.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now move into our county attorney agenda item, we'll ask Mr. Jacque Satter to come forth. And Ms. Matthews, our assistant county attorney.
Good morning, Chair Wood and members of the board. Ms. Matthews and I want to present just very briefly to put into your heads the issue of Henry First, Inc., because we're going to be asking you soon to take some action with respect to it. As you may all recall, and for those of you who weren't on the board at the time, this will be new for you. Henry First, Inc. is a Georgia corporation, it is a five oh one C three nonprofit corporation, which means contributions to that corporation are deductible. It was created by the county back in two thousand and nine. The purpose for which it was created was to accept donations from the private sector to fund county functions. It was presented to the Internal Revenue Service to obtain the five oh one C three status on that basis. So the short version is, individuals, corporations, businesses that want to help fund a county program can contribute money to Henry First. Their contributions then are tax deductible. Henry First is then designed to pay that money over to the county to support a county function. And Sherry's going to give you some inform, some information about the types of projects that is, that it has been used to fund. The corporation was set up such that it is run by a board of directors and by officers. The board of directors, by virtue of the bylaws, consists of the elected members of the board of commissioners. It is not required to be that way. If the board chooses, the board could appoint other mem, other people as the board of directors. You could each appoint, or the board as a whole could appoint one, two, or six, or eight, however many we wanted, we could amend the bylaws to accommodate more people. But if you wanted to provide some separation between the elected officials and the functioning of Henry First, you could do that. And we're going to ask you to give that some thought and report back to us, and we will present a resolution if the decision is to appoint outside people. The board of directors, once appointed, will appoint officers. And traditionally, how it's been run before is the officers have been staff here, so that they can take care of transferring the money from Henry First accounts into the county accounts. And that's the only way the money flows. The money doesn't flow into Henry First from the county, the money flows from private individuals to Henry First, from Henry First into the county. But the board may choose to separate itself completely from that and make it a standalone private five oh one C three organization. There's nothing that would prohibit that from being done. We would have to inform the Internal Revenue Service that we're separating from the county government. I wouldn't expect that to be a problem, they're going to be governed by the same rules that they're governed by now. And the other alternative, you really have three alternatives that we'll be asking you to think about. One is to simply continue to serve as the board of directors, appoint your officers, continue operation just like it is. Secondly, appoint outside directors, turn it over to them, they'll appoint officers, they'll run Henry First, Inc. Alternatively, the third option is you could dissolve Henry First, Inc., you could just get rid of it. The money that's in those accounts now would have to be paid to the designated beneficiary, and you would lose the ability to attract a lot of that outside funding. Now, generally, if someone makes a voluntary contribution to the county government, it is generally tax exempt. I can't say it always is as generally as tax exempt. It might depend on a lot of factors related to that taxpayer, and it would depend on some of the factors related to where the money goes. So that would be your third option, would be simply to dissolve Henry First and take that option away. I think the people that have been dealing with the money will tell you that we will lose contributions for a lot of good programs if we do that. With that said, I'm going to ask Ms. Matthews to give you a, just a really brief overview of what's going on with Henry First today and where the money looks like.
Absolutely, thank you, Patrick. As Patrick has indicated, the funds that are, that are collected are distributed to county departments that fall under the board of commissioners. As of today, the funding that we've received thus far has gone to two particular or specific departments. Our recreational department and our fire services. If you all will recall, I guess about two or three meetings ago, we had a donation from a church to the fire department and the police department. At that time, when the funds were received, the fire department did not know what they were going to do with their funds. And so, because it was a private donation, we put it into Henry First, and at such time that the fire department makes a determination, those funds will be fed to that department. More than ninety percent of the funds that are received are for our recreational Special Olympics or therapeutic recreation programs. The wheelchair sports program receives lots of funding from outside donations, from private vendors, and those funds are used to pay coaching fees, to purchase uniforms, and to do anything that pertains to that particular sports. Again, recreation with the Special Olympics. Several, several years ago, the county elected to contribute to the Patrick Henry statue, and donations were made to Henry First, and then those funds were actually paid out to the Andy Davis Arts Foundation for that statue. So it's items like that that we're paying for. As of today, the total revenue that we've received is thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Again, if those funds, or if the board elects to dissolve Henry First, it is very specific in that those funds will have to go to a particular department within the county in which those funds were allocated. If you all have any specific questions in terms of donations or anyone that has contributed, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions.
Any questions? I would like to make a comment. I am aware that although there are donors that can make donations to the county, and they are tax exempt, but there are donors that definitely require the five oh one C three. So I just wanted that information to be cleared as we, again, think through this and come back with a future resolution. Because this is for an update only. Any other comments or questions, clarifications?
I just want to say this is a good opportunity for us as commissioners when we are short on budget items, and we have businesses like the industrial park that we've talked about, about donating into this five oh one C three so that we can use to get things like paths paved at the golf course, or things done at our parks. So I think this is a great opportunity for people, and people that do business in Henry County, to give back to this community. So we can all use this program.
Thank you.
And if any of you have any questions, feel free to address them to either myself or Ms. Matthews, and we will be bringing you some resolutions in the next couple of meetings to, to clean things up and give you some options, and I'll be looking to you before we do that for some direction.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay, very good. All right, well, we'll now move into our public comments section, where citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, and et cetera that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. And we do have our first public comment from Mr. Anthony Ford to discuss the Eagles Landing City proposal, and we do recognize that there are others out there as well that are here to support him.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, once again, Anthony S. Ford, Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Starbridge. And in a sense, wanted to give the city's position per se on this proposed Eagles Landing school, and, excuse, city. Now, what it amounts to is that, actually, Nate Robinson, could you come, please? Nate Robinson is a councilwoman, and she's in the audience, so I'll honor her to join me here as well. I know it's not a court of law, but I have some, these position statements that are on our website, is if somehow I can give them to you, so you can at least have them in your hands? Do I just hand them to you, or is it some way I can give them to someone over here?
You can give them.
Okay. All right. And the county manager probably needs to get one as well. And also, if I wanted to show the, the citizens here, is there a way to put it up there as well? I, I just sit it on, just sit it on top? Okay? Anyway, this is our actual proposed statement. Now, what it amounts to is that the entire city council includes, includes Mayor Neal, as well as councilman, yes, sir?
There is not a signature.
Your councilman? Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand there's not a signature, that's correct. But it's on our website, it's our position, a statement, okay? Now, what I just want to highlight a couple of things for in this process. Through this, there was no consideration made or given to the devastating financial and social impact of such a proposal to have another city right upon the city of Starbridge itself. So unprecedented to do this in the state of Georgia. It's never happened before. Typically, when cities are actually developed in the state of Georgia, they come out unincorporated county area. They don't take from another particular city to establish that city. So this impose a substantial property tax in this aspect to develop this particular city, and right now, Starbridge doesn't have a city tax. So the mayor and council are all in sync in this aspect, and we strongly oppose the establishment of a city of Eagles Landing. And we're, we're in full support, actually, of seeking a better redefined boundaries. And actually, we have a proposal to the Henry County delegation, I own those redefined boundaries, and they're going to look at that for the two thousand seventeen general assembly, what's going on right now. What I also want to present to you, once again, I know it's hard to possibly see that in that aspect, we also have some talking points, and I don't want to put, sir, could you come here, please, and could you hand these to them? I don't want to put words in Chairman Wood's mouth, but I do recall, if I understand correctly, that at one time at a previous meeting, you weren't able to make a decision because you needed facts. These are facts. These are facts, and could you put this on here? These are facts in reference to how this would affect the city of Starbridge, and affect even, even the unincorporated area of Henry County. Severe adverse economic impact on Starbridge. Removing all primary commercial corridor will severely reduce the amount of revenues we receive annually through the business license and permits. Starbridge does not currently have a property tax, should residents vote on one in the future. The removal of these particular commercial properties, as well as removal of higher-value homes, will further adversely impact the city's ability to offer services at our current levels. Okay, and it requires some type of overlay of assessing millage rate for remaining residential property owners. Averse impact on existing franchise fees. Franchise fees for electric, gas, telephone, and cable TV make up roughly seventeen percent of our current revenues. These revenues will be reduced for the city of Starbridge if this city comes on board. We have certain obligations with the Capital One to hold the note for the city hall, waste industries and our sanitation, G E F A and our water and sewer facilities and others. So contracts will be affected that we presently have in, in stock with the city of Starbridge right now. Impact on bonding capability. A key component establishing a bond rating and the ability to secure loans and capital projects is based on the revenue history that we have over the course of time. Negative impact present for all cities, if you did this instead of negative presence for all the cities in the state of Georgia, which has never happened before. They talk about high intel, high-end retail stores and things of this nature and restaurants. Well, as you well know, a couple of months ago, we annexed Jodico Station, one hundred and sixty-plus acres inside the city of Starbridge, misuse development. Well, we're working towards that, and what this doesn't say is that we're giving a hire to additional people to the staff, because our city manager is a great guy, but he can't do it all, economic director and a community director, we're going to hire an honest staff to help us with this process, and they'll be hired no later than thirty April. So we're moving in that direction. Disenfranchised, extreme polarizing does not, does far more to divide a community rather than bring it together. And the committee itself refused to sit down and talk with us. We offered a hand to do that, but what we're also doing is we're going to reach out to the individuals, the citizens in those particular areas, have meetings with them, we're working on that right now, and I have two seconds left, and that's it.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Councilmember Warren. Thank you. Okay, so, thank you for your comments, and we also are, we have another individual that wanted to speak about this as well. Mr. Thomas White, who also wanted to speak about the Eagles Landing proposal, so we will move to him on this subject matter.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name, as you said, is Thomas White. I live in District Four. I am a resident of North Park at Eagles Landing. My wife and I are in the process of purchasing a park in Stockbridge at Winsong Plantation, I'm sorry, not Park Home, in Stockbridge at Winsong Plantation. Both of those areas are in the borders of the new city of, or what would be the new city of Eagles Landing, so this directly impacts me. I'm here to ask, what is the stand of the members of the board on this issue? Because we've heard very little come out of the board of commissioners, and I understand it's because this proposal was new. A lot of us didn't know that it was happening, so I'm not blaming you, I'm just asking that you please take a stand. Initial studies show that Starbridge revenue will decrease by fifty to sixty percent, okay? In Starbridge, the homes there, because they have to suspend capital and infrastructure spending and investment, the homes there will be devalued. The unincorporated areas, the property value will also fall. The new city of Eagles Landing, though it would have a higher median income and a higher property value, initially would not be immune to that effect. Eventually, as the homes around them are devalued, and all of North Henry County is devalued, the homes within the new city of Eagles Landing would also be devalued. We would have a subprime market crisis that hasn't been seen since two thousand and eight. And if you recall, the county saw a twelve-million-dollar drop in budget between two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve. We can't allow that to happen again. North Henry would be financially ruined by subprime market. The most economically viable city in Henry County, and that is Starbridge, which does have the median, the highest median income of any city in Henry County, and a steady economic growth rate, would be almost non-existent within years. The referendum being proposed would only allow the people in the limits of the new city to vote. Residents of Starbridge and North Henry County would not be allowed to vote on this referendum to form a new city. Every citizen in Henry County enjoys the right to vote, especially if that issue impacts them. I'm asking you not to consider the desires of just a few. I'm asking you to consider the desires and the future and the safety and the economic viability of two hundred and seventeen thousand citizens in Henry County. I'm asking that you protect the rights of every citizen to vote. I'm asking that you protect Stockbridge, that you protect Henry County, that North Henry County, and that you protect where I'm going to live. Stand with all of Henry County, protect its future, and make a decision now. Don't remain silent on this. Pick a side, choose. Are you going to support Henry County, or are you going to support the new city of Eagles Landing? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, seems like there is a comment from Commissioner.
I'd like to ask our county attorney, you've heard the comments, how would you advise this board as moving forward?
Well, let me say this. There is nothing the county government can or should do with respect to this proposal. This is an action to be taken or not taken by the Georgia General Assembly, not by this board of commissioners. If the Georgia General Assembly approves the proposal, it will then be a matter to be voted on in the referendum, again, by the voters, not by this board of commissioners. In fact, Georgia law prohibits the county government from spending money to either support or oppose any measure that goes on the ballot. You cannot, as a board, support or oppose something that will be voted on by the public. You can, you can put something on the ballot, but you can't expend public funds to campaign one way or the other. Thirdly, there will be no action this board of commissioners takes to make this happen or not happen, period. This will happen outside of these walls. My recommendation is, as a board, as a county government, that we do nothing, because there's nothing we can do, and nothing lawfully you should do. You certainly retain the right You certainly retain the right individually, just like you have the right to speak out on any matter individually, but in order to preserve the integrity of the county government and the use of county government funds, you should not do so in this form. You should not take a vote. You should allow that process to work itself out and, and stay out of it. Now, the time will come, if the city is approved, that we will have to work, take care of things like service deliveries and things like that, but we are at least a year away from that, because the law will not allow the city, will not allow that legislation to be approved in this term. The, the Georgia, the rules in the House of Representatives and the Senate require a new city be introduced in one session, and it can't be voted upon until the next session. So the earliest the General Assembly could vote on this would be the next session, which would push it back even further. So, um, I, I, at this point, there's simply nothing this Board of Commissioners should do, and I would urge against it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. We'll move on to our next public comment from Mr. Bill Tony, who wants to speak of the behavior of Commissioners and renaming of the airport. We took it off.
Thank you very much for, for your time. I've talked to everyone on the renaming of the airport. I've talked to each one of y'all, and y'all seem like you're on board with, going with, uh, what did, what was it you called it? Atlanta? Atlanta Airport? Atlanta Speedway Airport, wasn't it? Okay. I'm proud of Henry County, just like I told you, Ms. Clemmons. I'm proud of this county. I'm proud of my family living here. I'm proud of the name of it. I think for you to try to tie this into Atlanta is dead wrong. When you told me that everybody looked at you like a little black girl, no, ma'am. Everybody looks at you like you got a stick in your hand. You, you carry a lot of weight with these people because you are tough, and I respect you for being tough, but you need to take your efforts and put them into something else other than that stupid airport. You need to get our taxes down. You need to get, stop the bleeding over at the golf course. You got a lot more things going than just renaming stuff. It sounded more like when you were talking to me, that you were working for Mr. Smith than you were as a Commissioner. Please, I'm asking y'all to vote no when it comes up, and it will come up. It's taken off today, but it's gonna come back, I'm sure. I think, I don't, I don't know how you could tie a public co- company like the airport in with the county with a name. It's not fair. I wouldn't ask you to tie the, my company in with the county. You need to leave it alone. This is Henry County. This is Henry County Airport. I didn't agree with buying the airport, but we got it. At least we named it for what we are. All right. Every one of y'all were at the races weekend. Y'all hobnobbed the best of them. Y'all were doing well. Okay. I certainly hope all y'all kept your receipts. If you would, give these out to them, please. I hope y'all kept your receipts, because, uh, where y'all were at, uh, I think it constitutes a lot more than a hundred bucks, I promise you. You were wind and dying for the best of them, from what I understand. You met race car drivers, you, you did all kind of stuff. All six of you were over there. I certainly hope four of you didn't get together, and, uh, I will be sending in a freedom of, uh, of, of request to see all y'all's receipts for being over there. I'm, you know, just trying to keep everybody straight, keep everybody transparent. I'm asking you again to leave the airport alone. Get to, get down to some county business where it matters. Saving, saving taxes, cutting our taxes, putting money where it belongs. This is the kind of things, we got nice form, we got all these properties out there, all these properties that we need to sell off. These are things we need to be doing. Stop the bleeding over at the golf course, that thing's losing seventeen thousand dollars at a shot. Just, you know, do what you're supposed to do. I'm telling you, Dee, you're, Ms. Clemmons, you're a tough girl. Put your, put your toughness to good, not to bad. I don't want to be Atlanta. I lived in Atlanta. I moved out here to get away from Atlanta. Please, leave it alone. Get to working, doing the best thing for the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Our next public comment now comes from Mr. Carl Swinson to discuss the Splas Park.
Good morning. Good to see you again.
Good morning.
I've been paying attention to what's been going on with the, uh, park up in District Five, the Fairview Park at, uh, on Fairview Road, and I pay particular attention to what happens during rains, because I got a call from a couple of the neighbors that live to the east side of the park, and the flooding that they have experienced during certain rains has been extremely intense. Uh, one such property looked like a tributary of the, uh, I don't know, maybe the Grand Canyon, because it was wall-to-wall water, and it was moving pretty fast, washed out a guy's driveway. Okay, sorry. The water issued there is, is a very serious one, and I don't know if it came from the engineering phase or just what, but on the north end of the park, you've got a, um, an area of grass that is, not grass, that is a mud puddle, and I don't know if it's supposed to drain or what, but it's not draining. On the, uh, east side, where the people reside, the water's washing over the, um, path, the walkway, and, uh, eroding the sides over there, and then the retention pond on the south side of the, of this wonderful park. When it starts to get full, it has no place to go but downhill, and downhill is right over these properties. So somehow, some way, the engineering aspect of this was lacking severely, because these people are suffering massively. And to my knowledge, there has been no meeting with the people involved here, um, by Mr. Holmes, and Commissioner Holmes, they, they really do want to, to meet with you and talk about this, because it's really affecting them.
They haven't reached out to me. I know that Splas Park has been in touch with us, so I don't know if Ron is still here and if he can address it. Sherry, Sherry, can you address this issue?
Can we allow him to finish? While he's, he's, uh, interacting, so we can stop that clock part.
Look, it's, it's very important that we, when we do these type of projects, that we look at the people that are going to be affected, and you had also made a big point of, uh, the sidewalks being about the children, okay? Two days ago, um, my good friend Larry went up there and, and took a couple of pictures of a, of a new pathway from the, from the walk that went out to Fairview Road. The only problem is it doesn't, it doesn't go to the sidewalk, it just goes pretty much to the road and stops there. Now, I've had to build sidewalks in front of my buil- buildings before, and generally you have a, a nice slope. I don't know, is that planned at, at present? Okay. Uh, that, it, it looks pretty bad right now, because it just empties out into nothing, it empties out into the street. That's a bit of a problem for the people and the kids in particular who are gonna be using this, so you might want to pay attention to that. I don't know everything that's been going on, uh, inside the circles here of the county commission, but I do know what was in, what was in the paper here recently. And I was very dismayed to see that a person by the name of Missy Bickers was put on the Development Board, was it? And it's, uh, it's, it's been reported that Miss Bickers has some nefarious ties all across the, the country. And it's of great concern to me that we would even consider, and this board did vote to approve, Miss Bickers is going on the board, and then this, uh, this article came out. I'd like to know, who vets the people that you put on the board? Are these board positions payoffs for help that was done during election time? Because that's the, her alleged mode of operation, and it's kind of scary to see that we are drifting into that type of mentality.
Thank you, Mrs. Swinson.
He, he, we did have a dialogue going. When that happens, the clock is supposed to continue. Okay? So I'll be done just in, just a couple.
Okay, I'll give you, um, one minute, sir.
Well, thank you. We do, we do have to have the appearance of credibility, lawfulness, and all of that good stuff. But when you guys voted to put Miss Bickers on the Board of, uh, the Development Board, you opened us up for all kinds of litigation. You opened us up for all kinds of bad influence coming into Henry County. We're not ready for that. This community is not ready for that. We don't want that. We want everything above board, we want it transparent, and we want you to work for us, not against us, and not for personal gain or personal pro- profit. So whoever you have, uh, put on the board, and you didn't give a name, I, I really would like a name, so we can at least do maybe what, what you guys didn't do last time, and, and take a look.
We're out of time now, Swinson, I'm sorry. All right, I understand the Commissioner had a point that he wanted to make earlier. Did you want to move on with that or not?
I think I made my point.
I'm sorry.
I made my point.
Okay, very good. Okay. We have one, um, final, um, public comment from Mr. Robert Payne to discuss previous meeting operations and Splas signs.
Good morning, Board, and, uh, good morning, Chairwoman. Can y'all hear me? Just want to make sure the mic's in a good spot. Thank you so much. First and foremost, uh, thank you, Mr. Tony, for showing that picture. I appreciate you guys getting together outside of these walls in the public, that was great. I love seeing you guys together. I know you don't always get along, and that's fine, but seeing you in public eye like that, smiling, that was positive, I appreciate that. Commissioner Prince and, uh, Commissioner Clemmons and Commissioner Holmes, I appreciate that. We enjoy you being in the public eye. Forgive me while I read this, I'm not gonna be maintaining eye contact in an effort to try and keep under five minutes, I'm gonna keep to a script, okay? I know it's kind of rude not to make eye contact, but I'm gonna look down, okay? Excuse me. Uh, my name is Robert Payne, and I'm a longtime resident of Henry County. I come to you today to voice a growing concern that I have with the operation of this board. I've been involved with politics at all levels of government over the last fifteen years, and I'm very familiar with the usual game that's played in politics. While I don't agree with it, I recognize that we're never gonna get rid of it. I do, however, take issue when a Commissioner sees fit to become unruly, accusatory, and downright disrespectful. There's a time and a place for things like that, and in this meeting, and in the public eye, it's not the time for that. What I saw last meeting dated February seventh was an atrocity that resembled actions of the Clayton County School Board of the mid-two thousands. To listen to a Commissioner continue to bully this board, speak over others, speak out of turn, and personally come at another board member is not becoming of an elected official. Commissioner Holmes, I demand better from you. You're a, you are a leader in this county, and that was not professional what you did, and it was not respectful. You zeroed in on a fellow board member because they wouldn't give you what you wanted, so you threw a temper tantrum. This is the expected behavior of a two-year-old, not a grown man. Furthermore, you claim that not building your sidewalks will limit future economic growth in this county, and I submit to you, continuing to have an unruly board will be the cause for that. No future industry wants to plant where there is a volatile leadership. Statements like, "It's particularly disappointing to look over at this chairman, and if you support these African-American kids, then support them, and I just don't think you're the right person for the job, and that little song and dance that you just gave is absolutely ludicrous," are just a sampling of the quotes from your soliloquy. I take special offense to the fact that you took this to a new level and took a simple discussion and turned it into a matter of race, as to say that someone on this board doesn't care for African-American kids, or that the north end of the county only has American, African-American, excuse me, African-American kids. Either way you look at that, both of those thoughts are ignorant and uncalled for. It's time for you to apologize to this board for your unruly actions, and it's time for you to step up and be an example in this county. Board, thank you so much for the way that you guys have operated today. It's been professional, I've sat back there, and I've been very proud of you, all of you, including you, Mr. Holmes. I know I'm coming at you right now, but all of you have done a wonderful job today, and I appreciate the way that you have respected each other, and this is the way I want to see my board. Okay? Now, thank you for finally stopping the realigning of funds from Splas dollars like you did last meeting. We've seen this for years from previous boards, and it's a shame. The community is tired of voting on a set of items to then find that you, as a board, thought you knew better than them. To continue to say things like a Commissioner, and I won't name them, said at the last meeting, that this action is okay just because it's been done previously is upsetting to me, because this Commissioner ran on the fact that they were gonna be the new strong leader that their district needed. If you would like a new capital item, then think forward about it and add it to the next Splas. Don't retroactively revert the voters' requests. All that being said, Commissioner Holmes, I'm all for your district retaining the monies allotted for your district in the previous Splas, and I'm not in favor of removing them by any means. I trust that this board will either build a police precinct, or take it to the voters and allow them to weigh in on their needs, and not just the needs of you six. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we will now, um, move into our next agenda item regarding the approval of minutes for our February seventh, um, Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, any questions or revisions before we open the floor for a motion? The floor is now open for a motion for the approval of the February seventh minutes.
Motion approved.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? We'll now move into the Chair and Commissioner comments. And, um, any of the Commissioners have to make a comment, and not before mine?
I just want to tell the public, catch them up. We are, um, finishing up Phase Two of the Public Safety Pay Plan. This is very important. Um, last year, we passed Phase One of the Public Safety Pay Plan. Phase Two is a necessary item to continue it. Um, we will be having some town halls coming up here, so keep your eyes on Facebook and keep your eyes on the county website to see when we're gonna be having these, so we can describe to you exactly what Phase Two does encompass. So I appreciate all your support that you've given, public safety so far, and we're, we're moving on to the next phase, so, thank you.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Commissioner Brown? Commissioners?
We have the Houston A Town Hall meeting, uh, March the fourteenth at Llewellyn, Llewellyn Middle, at six-thirty, and the topic's gonna be public safety.
Any comments for Mr. Holmes?
No, no comments.
Okay. Uh, my comments are, um, first of all, we are in the middle of budget cycles, and so we are reviewing depart-, uh, budgets of each department. Um, I know the county manager and I are, especially for a new chair, um, that has been very critical- I know the county manager and I are, especially for a new Chair, that has been very critical. The second thing I do want to recognize is that my per comments just a moment, but I do want to acknowledge that Commissioner Holmes did apologize to me, and I have so graciously accepted that, and we have moved on in what you see today is a committed Board that will continue to stay focused on the citizens of Henry County. I will also say, I will also say that this Board, as again, we're now moving into our third month now as a new Board, working together, and I personally have recognized the strengths and the talents of each of these members, and again, we will continue to work towards the visioning of Henry County, some strategic actions and setting priorities, so that again, we will continue to focus on what our citizens have asked us to do. So again, just wanted to share those comments with you. And we will now move into the next item regarding our upcoming meetings and events. We do, on tomorrow, March the eighth, will have a nine o'clock call meeting, and that is to actually then move into an adjournment of an executive session to interview the county manager candidates. On March the twenty-first, we will have a regular Board meeting at six-thirty P.M., and then on April the fourth at nine o'clock A.M., we will have a regular meeting. So now, we will move into our executive session, and I request a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Moving.
We've got a first and a second. Any discussions regarding the executive session? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.